Um, roll call please. Absent. Absent.
Here.
Here.
Absent. Here. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm here. Bonnie's not. So with that said, we have three people on the board. All three of us must vote affirmatively for your motion or for your variance to be granted. So at this time, I'm going to ask you guys if you want to postpone until next month. If we have more people on our board, four to five, um, now's your time to say your name and we'll put you on the calendar agenda for next month.
This happened last month. This was my second time.
Correct. Correct. I'm very sorry for that. Okay. And again, I mean, you can do it all the way until your, your, your number comes up too. You know, just, just state that I prefer to go next month or, or here or so, right? You know, today. And again, I'm sorry. So with that said, no one wants to go right now, then just wait for your name to come up. Alright, so the approval of the men, uh, the approval or amendments to the agenda.
Well, I'm making a motion. We approve the amendments to the agenda or the agenda.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the approval for the minutes of February 15th meeting, we can't do because we need three members that were present at that meeting to vote affirmatively to pass the minutes. So we're going to postpone that till next month. Okay? I'm sorry. The Clay Township zoning board of appeals, our ZBA primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section 27.05 of ordinance number 126. There are five members on this ZBA, three of whom are present tonight. At least three members must vote affirmatively for a motion to grant a variance. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing at which time the applicant will first present his or her case and a public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belated, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to the deliberation of the particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to circuit court within 30 days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you are welcome to leave or stay as you wish. So we're going to open up new business. The first one is Jay ZVA 2023 dash 002 at 6335 Swartout. Would you like to state your case? Thank you. Just state your name and your address, please.
Steve Rickert, 6335 Swartout Road, Clay Township. Uh, I am just, as you know, applied for the variance. I'm looking to build a pole barn. Um, the setback for lot lines is 20 feet because I own over two acres. My problem with that is it's a very narrow, deep two acres. It's only 155 feet wide. I'm looking to ask for a nine foot variance on my east property line for a pole barn to be built. It was supposed to start this spring, but this has delayed that process a little bit. I have some photos. The issue of why I want it closer to the property line that lines up with my driveway. Simple. Um, I plan on building it to back either a boat. Right now a camper into that barn is just practicality reasons, the way my house sits and all of our vehicles parked to be able to back a vehicle into that barn without having to move the other vehicles in the driveway. I have, uh, spoke to my neighbor that is that property line. He submitted an email to Cindy Babbitts. I don't know if you folks got that or not. I have a copy of it here saying he does not care.
On the east?
Yes.
I don't have it in my package.
I don't have it. Can I have that, please? We'll read it during, during, uh, public comment.
Pardon me?
I'll read it during public comment.
Okay. Uh, that, I mean, that's basically, I have some photos, uh, including an overall satellite photo, just to show you the layout if you're not familiar with it. And what I'm kind of dealing with here, the house sits in the middle of the property. I put it too far, the 20 feet, it really creates a difficulty in backing anything in the main roll-up door. That's basically it.
And just the side yard, right? No height, no nothing?
Was not, uh, that wasn't on the, uh, denial. It was just the side.
Okay. We might ask you questions.
Okay.
Hang on one second. I'd like to open up public comment regarding this case. Anyone wish to speak? I'll read this letter. I, Louis Laparo, owner at 6293 Swartout Road. This is next to 6335 Swartout, which is requesting a variance for a nine foot setback for an accessory structure. I do not have any issues with this variance. Signed, Louis Laparo and Cheryl, Sharon, sorry. Anyone else? I'm going to close public comment.
I drove out there, I looked at this morning and this afternoon. I mean...
This is the same one from a month or two though.
Yeah, this was, you know, he got canceled last month. Um, to the east, that would be the only, you know, all those, you know, properties are real nice and big over there.
Right.
You know, he's got a narrow lot, you know, big acreage, but that doesn't...
Right. Well, like he said, I bet the practical difficulty of it would be is that is exceptionally narrow and for the length of it, I mean, two acres on a, on just 155, that's, uh, wide lot is, uh, pretty unique, you know, compared to, if you look at the, the map that we have as far as all those connecting parcels, you know, it's, uh, and to be, I don't know, our ordinance is in this fashion that, uh, if you own any property, you're almost, uh, the bad guy. But, uh, I understand why, but you know, because if this, if this were, uh, if this was cut off like the rest of them, this, we, we wouldn't be here because it would only be required to be a three foot setback.
Sometimes it's rewarding and sometimes it's punishment, owning some acreage. To me, it's just the narrowness of the acreage. I mean, yeah, he owns deep, but it doesn't mean, you know, keep throwing it back into the woods and cutting more, more woodstone. Not a hardship on the woods, but regardless. And personally, I think it's any closer to the house, you know what I mean?
Well, it's already seven foot. It's already seven foot.
Well, the math didn't add up on that one. It's 13.
Well, because he's got the breeze or the little side thing.
Right.
Gary, do you have anything that you want to add to this one? Or are you, are we reading it the right way as far as, uh, I mean, I, I think that person to the east, uh, sorry, Laparo, you know, he has a pretty good say, but there's no house there. There's, and even in the future, he's going to line up, you know, possible pole barn. And I think the 11 feet is a lot more than the three feet that is required for anyone less. He's not going for height, right? We're not worried about going away to gain his, his height. I think this one's a unique one.
Was the house already there or?
Yes, I bought it already. Correct.
And even, you know, driveway does line up and it doesn't make sense to go on the other side of the house. I mean, I do see a future pool there, which isn't going to, you know, he does have to maintain a certain distance if he puts the pool from the pole barn to a barn. But again, he's still got a deck back there too that he's got to worry about with the pool.
Where's your septic field on that?
Front yard.
Front yard. So that's a good thing at least. I mean, I see the clearing. I see, you know what I mean? It's kind of, it was kind of hard to find the property line. The fence is the property line that, on the left there on the east?
It's just off it. There's actually a yellow pole. There's a small pine tree just to the east there and there's a fence post opponent with an orange top on it.
On the other side of that fence?
Uh, it's actually just behind that fence.
Behind, okay. And I, I looked at it and mapped it off. I didn't see, you know, nine feet wouldn't, in this case, I don't think nine feet is, is humongous. On this case though.
When I was there, there was no green grass. But I like to go ahead and make the motion that we, uh, grant the variance. Practical difficulty would be, uh, just on the physical characteristics of a site that being that it's, it's long and narrow and just the key points, the highlights that you had said about the side setback. The unique situation again is, um, it is a long and narrow lot. It, I don't think it's going to have any, um, you know, it wasn't self-created because you bought the property as in that fashion. Substantial justice, I think it'll be due, like Brian was saying, is it's not going to hurt for the next person down the road because they're going to have to have the same sort of setbacks as well. And they're not going to put a house right next to your pole barn. It's going to be up front close. And I don't really think it's contrary to the ordinance being that if this were a normal lot or, you know, so you're not confined, it would be, you know, three foot setback. And you hear we're only asking for nine, so there'd still be 11 feet off the property line, which you can drive your car up and around it.
That was the original plan to be able to park a car alongside on that side or a trailer or jet skis or something to leave enough room. Then we realized that the setback was 20.
You can only have three boats parked in your property. So that's where I go.
We had to go there.
I'll second that.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Okay. Our roll call. Okay. Joe's second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for being patient.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Need a minute, Sue? So in our brief intermission, if anyone's interested in being a ZBA member, please contact Artie with an email. We are looking for alternates. So the next case, I mean, are you going to go or Harson's Island? Okay. It's like it's the month of July already. Everyone vacations or something. I don't know. I know Bonnie got tied up late. The others postponed or they couldn't make it earlier in the... We got to get you one of those typewriters, shorthand typewriters, Sue.
Leave her alone.
Shorthand. Sorry, she's doing double duty. And Dennis doesn't take very good notes.
No, you know that. Penmanship is not my specialty.
Okay. As this is getting passed to us, we're going to start with, uh, the next case at, oh, it doesn't have a number on it. Alright, so a change. So it goes right to the address at 7385 Venice Highway. Representative, please come up, state your name and address.
Uh, Robert Bates Jr., RGB Contracting. Uh, my current address is, do you want my current address or the address of the property? Sorry.
Your address.
Uh, 489 La Croix, Harson's Island.
Okay.
It has changed since I filled out the original paperwork.
Okay.
Um, we're looking for a variance. Um, we are building a, we are attempting to build a pavilion on a deck that has been approved by the township. Um, it was due to setbacks. It was denied, um, going into the seawall that would block views to the north and south on the Venice Highway. Um, the homeowner has already been approved for a boathouse that is being built, I believe, next month, um, that extends further past where our three posts for the pavilion would be. Um, and as for to the south of this property, there is a gazebo that is already out past where we would be seen, um, looking down the canal to the north. The only home that exceeds further than the home we're trying to build off of, um, is the very last house, the furthest house north. Um, they're the only ones that I would see would, um, lose a little bit of vision. But as I said, there's going to be a boathouse that already extends further than where our three posts would be, as well as looking through three posts doesn't stop much of a view. Also, my client, um, on the east side of his house is where septic is, so there would be no option to build anything covered there. Um, to the north is his neighbor's house or his neighbor's property and to the south, he's only got about an eight foot stretch between his home and the seawall for the canal.
So you're seeking the variance because you're building in the setback? Is that what?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I took a ride out there yesterday to check it out, see where it was. I was explaining to one of the ladies out there where we're...
So this is the pavilion and not the obstructed posts?
I'm sorry. It's, um, there's just three posts that hold up the outside of the pavilion, just for our hat.
So what it is, is just a, just a roof cover with the three pole holding roof that's going to be extending up over the deck. Look at the drawings. I was, I was trying to get a feel of it myself too. So when I went out there yesterday, it made sense. So when you're, it's towards the, it's on the back of the house facing directly into the canal. And then if, then if you notice out towards the river is where all the new seawall work was and a new boat hoist and the soon to be built, uh, boathouse, which is going to extend, uh, it actually is going to block their view, everything, their own view of the lake, if you want to call it, you know, the river. Um, so they would just be primarily just looking forward, you know, their view, where they're going to be building the boathouse.
Okay. Now, hold on one second. I'm going to open up public comment. Anyone wish to speak for or against this case? Alright, I'm going to close public comment. Can you step down one second?
Yes, sir.
Gary, could you come up for half a second, please? On this, is it the three posts or is it the railing on, on above? I mean, what?
No, you know, these properties don't have setbacks to begin with.
Right.
Um, but, uh, you know, and that's why the deck is fine. The deck's going to be below that 36 inch mark that put it into the unobstructed yard space. Uh, but this is a pavilion, uh, built right off the house. That's going to be about two foot away from the seawall. So it's going to take up that space back there. And yes, I mean, we've looked at it before. You've got three posts. Can you see through them? Yeah. Uh, we know that boathouses are exempt from unobstructed yard space. We know that doesn't count for anything when it comes to this. But, um, but yeah, we're just looking at, uh, probably those three posts.
Three posts. Never to be enclosed.
Well, that would be your board decision, which I would hope you would add that, that you would never enclose it.
It's on the permit, from the permit details that he provided.
Is it going to be enclosed?
No, sir.
Oh, it's not?
No, the boathouse.
Oh, the boathouse, yes, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, your pavilion.
Oh, no.
Those three posts are open.
But if we put it in, in the record that it can't be, um, enclosed, that would be helpful in keeping that just three posts in the way versus a building in the way.
Perfect. Right, yeah.
Why is there three posts? Uh, just because of size or because of the pitch of the?
Well, it's having this structure into that unobstructed yard space. Um, that's really what's at issue.
Joe, that's the John.
Got it, three.
So, yeah, you have to out the middle hole and let's see.
Alright, because I didn't know, because I saw the railings.
No, there's no railings.
That's just, oh, that's his top structure. That's what I was like. I'm sorry.
The house right now is like 18 feet from, you know, all those houses are between 12 and 18 feet.
23 feet wide, 18. They got it.
From the seawalls. Like he said, like Gary said, there are no setbacks. So there, I mean, there, you know how it is. You live right there too.
I'm just wondering what the, um, I guess when you get to the back of, I'll ask him what the definition of pavilion means to him.
Yeah.
What he's constructing is a solid roof, you know, pitched roof that's going to be tied into the house, um, outward. So, yeah, you can call it a lot of different things.
Right. Covered.
Covered porch, covered deck, covered, yeah.
Well, they have...
This thing cottage right now is going to be.
Yeah.
I thought it was a deck on top with railings.
No, no, there's, uh...
That's, you know, at first, you know, at this first glance. Okay, now I get it. protruding out.
Yeah, it's a two...
So there's no walk-in, so it's going to be...
It's a two-story.
Enclosed gable, correct? It's not an open gable. It's enclosed gable? Okay. That's what I'm seeing now. Okay. See, to me, Gary, look, see, to me, I'm looking at, this is railings, just not drawn all the way up. And then this was a deck that they were going to walk out to, not knowing that it was the skeleton of the structure. And I'm like...
Right, I see how you...
Hang on a second. Okay. Sorry. My bad.
Yeah, see, and then it shows the two windows on the upstairs of the bridge of the house there above it.
Oh, okay.
So it's just to kind of complement the windows, you know, when you're looking at the, because like I said, it's two stories.
Different verbiages, I guess.
Yeah.
Pavilion, covered porch.
I would have covered a covered porch.
We're good. Thank you. Sorry for misreading that one. Because that sounded like, what about the railings up above? I mean, we're, you know, so it's not, so it's not. So we don't ever have to worry about a deck above. We don't have to worry about people jumping off anything deck-wise to the water. You know, so you don't, you don't have to get that at that roof. It looks like it'd be fun, but... They're all...
Well, Joe, I think it's your turn.
Yep.
I'll make a, a motion to approve this because it's the three posts, unobstructed, uh, based on the covered porch or pavilion, uh, based on that, uh, area where there's no, um, setbacks on the narrowness of the, uh, uh, canal side, 18 feet. And there's the three posts.
Joe, do you want to add?
Yeah, well, I think we, that's what we've been adding is, uh, in the future, not to enclose that, uh, covered porch or pavilion, um, completely enclose it.
Yeah, not to make it look of Four Seasons.
Well, I'll second it.
Make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Alright. I'm going to, uh, so we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
So roll, roll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. It passes. Next time, I just wanted to just, let's try to, let's try to do these five.
Okay.
Okay, you guys. And, and any motion that we, you, you know what I mean? At least try to address them.
Do we have a few minute intermission? Can I run to the restroom?
Go. 30 seconds.
Oh, I'm out of mistake.
Man, I totally read that thing wrong when I looked at it at first. We weren't addressing anything with that deck, right, that you put on this? It just says, you know, after the fact thing. So that's not...
Well, I'll say this, that, um, you know, it was caught that the work was started without a permit, uh, but he sunk the post and then completely stopped and waited for the process.
The deck though?
So, yes.
The pavilion posts are not, okay.
No, not even the deck was...
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, tested it to him. He stopped and didn't move forward until he got the approvals.
It just wasn't on your notes, but I saw it on the permit part. I'm like...
Did they tear a house down next door to it?
It, it looks like there's some open space that there should have been something there.
Yeah.
Alright, as she's coming up, we'll go to new business at 6123 High Street, or sorry, High, High Road. Thought it was High, but it's not High Street. Sorry. Did you sign it?
No.
Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Jerry Gura, 6123 High Road. I, um, I have an update to the, uh, the packet and your materials. Can I approach and hand you something?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, as mentioned, name is Jerry Gura, 6123 High Road. My, um, my wife Gigi, we live, that's our personal residence. Um, we are Michigan natives, born and raised in blue collar Warren. Um, both of our fathers worked, um, in the automotive. Her, Gigi's dad for General Motors, my dad, 45 years on the production line at Ford. Um, I was raised in a family of 11, um, self-funded, went to, went to college, got my engineering stripe, took a job down south. We were down there for 37 years. When it came time to retire, we said, you can take, you can take the kids out of Michigan, but you can't take Michigan out of the kids. So we came back and we liked the east side. So we ended up over here in St. Clair. And, um, timing was good. This property that came up on High Road, um, was just what we were looking for. And it was a, uh, it was a small one bedroom home being built for retirement and into a single individual. And we took that and built off of that concept to have it be our three bedroom home where we live with our son. So that's a little bit of the backstory. Um, in this deck, I've, uh, what we are seeking is a zoning variance, um, to locate a type two home occupation in our pole barn. Okay? And as you know, um, the, the, the standard is, is written around type two home occupations being located in the dwelling or attached building. In this packet, I'd like to take you through a little bit of the background of where we're, where we're headed, what our thoughts are. We're actually looking to start a business, um, and, uh, take you through some information about the market, about the opportunity, about our approach and strategy, and then close with, um, you know, take you through the, the, what we see as the issues that impact our ability to execute and ask your help. That's where we would ask for your help. So... And then close with, um, you know, take you through the, the, what we see as the issues that impact our ability to execute and ask your help, that's where we would ask for your help, so. First up, um, on page two, three, okay? We, we've been looking at the craft beer industry. And, and, and three is just a little market insight, right? Craft beer was twenty-three percent of U.S. sales in two thousand seventeen, this data's from seventeen, with an annual projected growth rate of eleven percent, right? And there was information in that study also by demographic, by age group, and what, where, where the industry was headed. Craft beer being more socially accepted as drink, the idea of lower alcohol tolerance, um, fruit flavors added. So this was the start or, or the middle of the road with the craft industry, and it, um, it continued to grow and take off. Then on, if you take, bring it home to Michigan, on page four, right? You know, so we have, we have some very successful breweries in Michigan, right? We have Bell's, Founders, Frankenmuth, New Holland, right? And if you look at the graphic on the left, where are, there are four hundred and seven breweries, these are, these are not pubs, these are locations that manufacture beer. They could be a pub, but there's four hundred and seven locations that manufacture beer, and when you look, they're all on the west, Grand Rapids, Kalamazoo, they might get as far east as Lansing, and then they're up north. If you look in, in the lower right where we are, there's nothing. I mean, other than maybe, um, War Water up in Marine City, there's not a whole lot of brewing activity taking place here. There's a lot of brew pubs here, a lot of, a lot of establishments that have retail licenses that sell to the public, but not many in the area that are manufacturing. And the interesting fact is that the beer industry in Michigan alone is a two-point-two billion dollar a year industry. So it's, kind of gets our attention and says, interesting. What, what do we want to, you know, it, it, let's, you know, the thought was, let's, let's put Clay Township on the map, let's establish a brewery capability here. So we came up with this concept, and I, in my background, I've, I'm a, I do personal brewing, I've made wine and beer for fifteen years as a hobby. So I know a little bit about the craft, the trade, and how to make, you know, how to make that. So we started developing this concept, and we came up with an approach, and on, on page, uh, five, um, we came up with this concept that we called Noble Mutt. And, and celebrating Michigan, its traditions, Michigan's love of the dog, the outdoors, and build on that concept. You know, what occurs to us is that if you want to compete in the brewing industry, you, you gotta have a good product, but the good product doesn't guarantee your success, it just keeps you from getting fired. You need, you need something that appeals, you need something that connects with your audience. And so the notion that we can connect with the Michigan public based on a celebration of the outdoors, celebration of activities, and, and celebration of the canine, it was very intriguing. So we came up with this Noble Mutt, sit, stay, and sip, right? So, um, and on, on page, um, page five, we're showing a number of the brews that we make, we have a Mexican lager, and these are all, I would point out, these are not, these are all just from a personal consumption perspective. We're not licensed yet to do it, so we make this, but we're developing this into a product, into a, a strategy. We have Mexican lagers, we have, um, German mashed concoction lagers, we have grapefruit citrus, and we move down the line into red ales, and then some of the heavier's like the Belgians, and then into the porters, right? And, um, we, we, in developing these, we said, okay, let's, let's test this with family and friends, and we got some really good feedback. And then we said, okay, that's good, but what's the real market say? So we started going up and down the waterfront, we started in New Baltimore and made our way all the way through up to Cotterville. And we've been sharing samples with, with the knowledge, with the sharing that, hey, this is, this is not for sale, right? This is just simply our, our personal, you know, staff, our personal collection, and, and we're interested in your feedback. And so we've been sharing with, you know, some beer and liquor stores, we've shared with Zeps on the rocks, Club Capri, um, and up, you know, up through, you know, up through Cotterville. And hands down, we're getting lots of good feedback, lots of interest in this notion that brewed locally, consumed locally, local economy benefit, and hey, nobody's doing this, why don't you guys, you know, why don't you guys, we, we think it's a good idea. So we got a lot of good support for, um, for moving forward. So we came up with, on page, page six, a strategy that said, you know, our opportunity is Clay Township locally brewed craft beer. Our customers are restaurants, pubs, clubs, party stores, so those establishments that have retail licenses to sell to retail. Our position would be as a manufacturer, so we would not sell locally, we would not sell, I was going to say, we would not sell retail. It's not like we have Happy Hour on High Road and twenty customers show up, that, in fact, unless people are watching this, this, you know, recording, nobody would even know we're there. Because when you brew, right, you're indoors, you can't see it, you don't hear it, and, and you don't smell, I mean, there's just, there's no lights, there's no, nothing, it's just a quiet operation indoors, right? So, and marketing would be client site, you know, based promotions, festivals, special events, beer tent, you know, those kinds of activities. And, you know, you have different breweries coming in and featuring, and, and what about Clay having representation in that, in those spaces? And so then, if we think about, on slide seven, brewery history in Michigan, right? You know, you think about Bell's, they're a, they're, they have roots in a homebrew operation, they now operate one of the oldest breweries in Michigan, they were doing at one point five hundred thousand barrels a year, right? And then, you know, New Holland, similar story, they're the largest independent brewery in the state, they do about fifty thousand barrels a year. War Water up in Marine City is the closest we have, I think, I don't know of anybody else brewing beer other than War Water in Marine City. They're doing about six, seven thousand, and I know they're, they're expanding and looking to get into Macomb County and grow that operation, so they're trying to get to eight to ten. So if you look, if you think about where we're headed, though, we're establishing a very, very small four-barrel operation, which is about, it's called a nano brewery, it's about as small as you can go and drive towards profitability, you know, positive cash flow. And on the graph on the right, if you look, you can see where we've plotted, New Holland, Frankenmuth, and then there's us, Noble Mutt. So when we're at maximum capacity, we're barely visible on the screen, we're still a very small operation with what we're proposing on doing here, okay? So now if you think about our growth model on, on page eight, we're just, we're on line one, we're a startup operation, where we engage Michigan licensed retail clients and sponsors by appointment. We have a type-two occupation in the pole barn, and we distribute, Michigan will allow us to self-distribute up to two thousand barrels a year, right? That's, that's me and our son riding around in the truck doing deliveries, right? So you get just three-quarter ton pickup, that's our, that's our traffic in and out of the neighborhood, that sort of thing. If we're successful, if we grow, and we decide we can go beyond two thousand barrels, then we look at establishing operation in a commercial zone, you know, and then, and then you might grow it to five thousand or ten thousand barrels a year, you know? But that would be in a commercial zone, and then eventually you might even think about having a, like a waterfront location where you do a brew pub, but that's a longer-range thinking, what we're talking about now is just a pilot operation. So then on, on slide nine, um, talking about, um, a little bit about the brewery plant, right? And on the left is just an example, it's, it's high-quality stainless steel operation, has a commercial look and feel, right? You have a, a brew house, you have your fermenters, you have your bright tanks, all that sort of thing. And on the right is a footprint of what this brewery might look like, where you have your brew house, you have your, your supplies, you have your bottling operation, you have your setup, right? And, and, um, this is, if you think about clients that might want to come in and say, all right, you know, let's tour your operation. You need to have enough going that they're going to say, yeah, this is, this is, um, this is impressive, we're willing to bet and bank with you, right? And this is kind of like the minimum that we would need to do in order to have a commercial presence, have clients be willing to sign up and say, yeah, let's go do this. So then on, on, um, on slide ten, this is a view of our, our, um, High Road lot and our site plan, and we'll get really, we're just a couple pages away from the discussion on the, on some of the issues. So in the upper left is, is the place that we purchased in two thousand seventeen, you can see it was a one-bedroom place, had a very small attached garage, four hundred and eighty feet. This place was built, you can't see it in the photo, but it has seven feet of backfill, um, to, uh, cover the exposed, the basement. There's a, there's a small seven-foot basement with six-and-a-half foot clearance. So what we purchased was a place that was pre-framed, um, it was graded, the flood zones were defined, the drainage was defined, the driveway was defined, right? The, um, the runoff, the parking area, so all of this was defined when we bought in, and what we did is we came and we built on that, and we, um, um, we, we added two bedrooms and made it into our home, taking advantage of, you know, the current plan, the current layout. In the upper right then, you can see, um, the, the lots, right? We have two lots totaling twenty-two acres, um, in the plot on the right, this is directly from the Clay, you know, website. There's our home, the setback is about four hundred and sixty feet in the road, deep in the woods. The pole barn hasn't yet been, um, added to the photos, the aerial photos, so we kind of sketched it in there. The pole barn is a couple hundred feet from the house, in a location, and this is, you know, per some conversations with Gary when we were building this pole barn, is about, you know, where it might be a good place to, to put it, and we appreciated Gary's input in helping us to determine the best location for it. And so that's where we ended up placing the pole barn for, um, for what we had going on there. And so the key thing is, this is very spacious and private, right? And it's, uh, you drive by, unless, unless you know it's there, you might not even see it, it's deep in the woods, okay? So then, on slide eleven, we get into what are some of the issues preventing us, uh, from moving forward. So, um, in the upper left on slide eleven is just a, a simple drawing of the, uh, small garage, the pre-existing garage. It's, uh, twenty by twenty-four, four hundred and eighty feet, it's just deep enough for, for my wife to park her Jeep in there. And on the right, we have stairs and a sink, and that pretty much takes up that space, you know, you can't, it's, it's not deep enough to park your truck. If you take the, the, this small nano brewery, the footprint I was showing you, and you superimpose it, this is like trying to put ten pounds of brewery in a five-pound garage, it just doesn't fit. There's not enough room in that garage, um, to put in an operation that could meet the minimum needs of, you know, what, what our clients would be expecting. So the proposed solution, um, oh, by the way, when you think about, and this is probably more from a planning perspective, um, on the twenty percent rule, you take twenty percent of your heated square footage, and you say, this is the amount of, you know, that you can allocate to a type-two occupation. You know, that, that number comes in around seven hundred and thirty-seven square feet, so the footprint of this brewery is five seventy-six, so we offered that we check the box on that one, that we're not exceeding the size that would be allowed. So then, if we go to, um, page twelve. The proposed solution is to locate in, in the pole barn, and in the upper left, you can see the victoria of how nicely that fits. We kind of nestle it in the middle bay, um, leaving a lane for access, and it works its way over to the bay on the right side. It fits nicely, you can have a nice walkway around it, that sort of thing. And on the right, again, I think this is more input that the planning committee might be worried about, like parking spaces for clients, although our clients would simply be individuals that, um, um, that are retailers that would potentially want to buy the product, so they might come in and want to do a tour, right? And then they're gone, so it's not as though we're serving, selling, um, alcohol out of, out of this location, in fact, our license would, would not permit us to do that. We can, we can meet all the other, you know, all the other stipulations from a planning standpoint, where street parking's not required because we don't have a client base coming in. The footprint issue that we talked about, we, we can satisfy that. All brewery activities occur quietly indoors with no disruption, no sight sound, you don't even know it's there, um, and delivery vehicles would all be less than a ton, right? So that, I think that's a stipulation. So then, getting to the meat of this, um, on page thirteen is, is the application. And so, we think about it from, from the five key questions, the practical difficulty is, you know, we would offer is, the pole barn was located in an area that complemented the existing floodplain drainage plan in the existing built structure, the, the location of the pond, the location of septic field. So that's where we had to go with any attempt to attach the pole barn to the house would have been disastrous, we would have been building in the middle of the floodplain, right? And then driving, and, and it was just, it wasn't, not possible. The unique situation is that the pre-existing attached garage is significantly undersized, you can't put the operation in there, right? So, um, and then the situation, of course, um, item three, not self-created, right? This is what we bought, this is what we inherited, you know, the first two conditions, so we're operating from the perspective of how can we move forward given what we've inherited, okay? And then, um, on bullet four. Substantial justice, you know, in terms of fairness, um, if you look around and see what other types of businesses are running, right? Whether it's a construction or somebody selling syrup or somebody doing wood, um, and I, we ask ourselves, not that we're reflecting on those businesses, we're saying, how does the, the site sound, you know, that's going on, how does that compare to what we're doing? And we think, we offer that we exceed that because we're less visible than most other type-two occupations in the area. So we think, uh, we would offer, we think we're pretty good on that one. And then finally, perhaps last but not least, it's not contrary to the ordinance. There's, there's the letter of, of the, of the standard and then the intent of the standard, and I would offer that locating in the pole barn actually does a better job of, of meeting the intent of the standard from the following perspective. If we attempted to locate in the existing attached garage, uh, which we can't do, we are two hundred feet from our nearest neighbor, Mrs. Warden, right? If, if we locate in the pole barn, we are now four hundred feet from our nearest neighbor, and if you look across the street, we're a thousand feet from Rick Martin, and six or seven hundred feet from our nearest neighbor to the, to the west. So, um, I would offer that while the letter of the intent is to be, or the letter of the standard is to be located in your dwelling, that, that standard's typically written, or is written from the perspective of lots that are maybe one to two acres. We're fortunate to have twenty-two acres, so we can spread out, and, um, and we can, um, I think we can exceed what, um, I would offer that we can exceed what, uh, um, what other businesses are doing in that area. Then to show, um, support, we've approached all of our neighbors on High Road as many as we can, and, and in fact, every one of them that orders our property, and they're very supportive. The petition, we asked them to actually, if they would support a petition, so on pages fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, is a signed petition from all of our neighbors. The feedback is, you know, is very encouraging, they're excited, um, they've, they like the product, they, uh, um, and, and they're, actually, some of the comments are, you know, that we're getting are very encouraging about, we need more entrepreneurial spirit in the area, so, hey, we're, we're, um, we're excited that our neighbors are excited about that. We also have several establishments from the waterfront that have, um, participated in some of our product feasibility, and we're getting really good feedback, um, from, from, you know, the various restaurants and pubs along the waterfront. So we're encouraged by that, and, and based on that feedback, we're willing to, you know, make the investment to go set this up. So, um, uh, with that, you know, I, um, I guess the only other thing is, um, we've got a letter, just came out today, I know, um, Brian, if you saw it, a letter from, uh, Tom Fetter, that it came out today, I was on copy.
That's right here.
Tom's just endorsing, wrote a nice letter of endorsement, um, he's, he's taking a look at what we're doing, and he, he likes it, so I, I have extra copies here if you got, if, uh.
We have one in our packet, we'll read it.
Okay, all right. So at that, I guess I pause and try to answer any questions.
If you could brew in your, if your garage was the correct size, could you brew in your garage?
I don't believe so, I believe the federal TD, TTB prevents, um, a brewery from being established in a dwelling. So, um, um, we actually have submitted the application, um, and, uh, um, in the guidance, they said, you know, that you can't put, you can't put a brewery in your dwelling.
I'm looking for the letter.
Eric, I've got a copy here.
It was attached, the preface is on the table. There's an email there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll read it.
Surgery.
Oh, y'all did?
Okay.
that's not too, well.
Well, I think my first question to him was, you know, he caught me on the property looking, and I said, well, why are you doing it legal? Why not just do it? He can't sell it, he couldn't sell it to a restaurant. So, I'm like, okay, that's perfect, you know what I mean? So, in my eyes, it's like, this pole barn is beautiful, and I don't, I don't know, I don't see an issue with his pole barn at all.
I don't, I don't either. I mean, it's not even in the properties.
Gary, would you like to add anything?
Sure.
And I'll just add that, you know, this is step one. This has really, before you guys, is just asking whether or not he can move a type two home occupation out to a detached accessory structure, where it's permitted inside of a garage, it's permitted in a basement, it's permitted in a breezeway on type two, which is, you know, a little more denser than the type one, that's a little more restrictive or a lot more restrictive. So, this is simply step one, you know, to see if he can move this heaven operation, home operation out in the pole barn. We still have to go to planning commission, this is special land use, so they would have to approve the actual use as a brewery out there. And it is just a startup operation, he can't really expand it better than that. But this gives him, I guess, an opportunity to say, if I do well, then let's talk about moving this to a commercial establishment to where he can maybe meet up with the big boys, right? So, right now, your decision is really just whether or not you allow him to do his home occupation in a detached accessory structure.
Thank you. That's how I was reading, I was wondering why we were first. I'm glad you said that, thank you.
And that's, you know, that's a good, I like the grassroots, I like it, you know, that, hey, you know, he could be a, you know, we do have one other brewery, you know, what is it, the Harson's Island Brewery, but it is brewed in St. Clair, wasn't it?
They closed.
Oh, they did close, okay. So, good, maybe we'll get a Fisher Bay Brewery or something weird. You guys, I think it's great, you know, business owner, I think he's doing it the right way, and it is, we're not the only one, he's just asking permission to move it where we go from an existing garage, just like kind of a honey maker or bee maker or someone that chops wood, construction, you know? We have pole barns, you know?
Right.
So.
Yeah, that was an excellent presentation, should go.
Yeah, you guys, whoever, this was, this was nice.
Thank you.
You know, hopefully, this is on our webpage, that people can look at it.
We'll get a copy over to you.
I wish everybody did this. Maybe this year may require me. This is great, great presentation, I think, you know, I wish you the best, you know, and I hope everything does go well, you know?
We're getting really good feedback. I was waiting for the bomb to drop, and we've met with, I don't think he would mind me saying this, we met with Billy at Club Capri one night, we brought in, he said, come on in on Tuesday, it's slow. So, we came in with some samples, and he said, you know, Billy, these aren't for resale. He says, yeah, he's bopping them open and pouring samples, and I'm like, okay, now, honest opinion, because I'd rather learn about stuff that people don't like when I'm doing five gallon batches versus, you know, 400 gallon batches. And he tried them all, and he goes, you know, he says, I like them all. He said, you know, I don't like porters, but if I did like porters, this is a good porter. He tried our red ale, and he asked me what name we were gonna go with, and on the grapefruit citrus, we actually have, we actually have an example here, we can show you. It's our, it's our, it's our yellow lab and our son.
That's just on the picture?
That's on the picture, yeah. And he says, what are you gonna do with, what are you gonna do with your Irish red ale? And we're like, well, we're thinking bloodhound red, you know, like a wood scene and dog, you know, hunting, you know, celebrating. Once again, everyone is gonna celebrate a canine or, you know, and some sort of activity. And he goes, he says, if you're successful, he says, I'll dedicate a tap at my bar, and that'll be the first one we put in. And I'm like, okay, Billy, if you're telling me that, I'm willing to go ahead and spend a little money to try and get this thing running and see what we can make of it, right? And it's a, it's a good, it's a good trade-off. We, the building is a sunk cost, right? So, we capitalize that. Our investment is in the equipment, and we can contain that. And I think we can get the cash flow positive, you know, in a reasonable timeframe, as long as we continue to have success with, you know, retailers. And we're not competing, we're not competing with anybody. So, you know, as long as you make a product, I think, I think we have a good chance that, you know, we're willing to take the plunge and give it a try. That's kind of where we're at.
Great restaurants around here that I'm sure would like to sample that, too.
Yeah.
All right, guys, I can't make a motion. For or against?
You know, I don't, I don't wanna, I think everything written here.
I think you spelled it all out pretty clean.
Yeah, I think, I don't need to.
Well, I probably should read it for the record if you're gonna make the motion, right?
Okay, understand, just read that. Highlight, highlight what you, what you wrote.
Okay, practical difficulty, the pole barn is located based on the land and the drainage and the low spots of the property as when he built it. Unique situation, again, it was a pre-existing, the garage was undersized and didn't accommodate his home occupation type two business that he's proposing. Not self-created, he didn't do anything to, when he bought the place in 2017, everything was pretty much in place there. He added gravel and septic field location was already been determined. occupation, and we're not, they're not seeking any special privileges. Again, the business is quiet, no lighting, and it'll be within that pole barn. And it's not contrary to the ordinance, it's, again, he stated it'd be as small as one acre, but they have 22 acres, so things will be hidden from the road, and whoever is coming in, it's pretty much not for drinking, it's pretty much for reviewing the layout and his operation.
Are you done? I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve this variance. Roll call, please.
Oh, hang a second, sorry.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Sorry, we didn't read Tom Fetter's letter, but Tom is a good guy, and I'm sure he was all for it. Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Good luck to you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
You said you brought samples.
Yeah. No, I just, no, just kidding.
So, reading Tom's letter, he was very encouraging to support of you. Again, thank you. My bad that I did not read it in public comment.
Yes, we have to hand out with our package, not why. This is an example of how it should be, nice and typed out, yeah. You got a new business right there, you should go for ZB, or for, hey, you know what? We got an open chair.
You need a holiday after you get the brewery run.
Yeah, there you go. It's always a catch, right there.
Well, I think you'd make more money doing the presentations than actually being on the court.
I'm pretty excited. There's a lot of, you know.
Where did, just think back in the day, where Chris Craft started out of?
Yep, 100%. Everyone started out of a garage.
The only Michigan brewery that didn't start in a garage, you can go read down their website, they started out at a 10,000 square foot. And then, they came just close to going bankrupt. They were putting locks on the doors. Everybody else started in the garage, built from there, back to that full positive.
I just like you guys are all regulated to where you have to take that next step, you know what I mean? It's, I like that philosophy of it, too, at least we know we're not getting pole barns here. All right, I didn't sign either. All right, sorry, didn't see that one fly through. Again, good luck to you. All right, we're gonna open up the next one at 7982 Anchor Bay Drive. Representative, come up and state your name, thank you for being so patient.
No problem.
Usually, we don't have four, but.
I can follow that guy, but I mean.
That's all right.
My name is Jason Thomas, I live at 7982 Anchor Bay Drive, and I'm coming here today to seek a variance for roof mean height for a new garage that I'm, wanna build. So, my wife and I, just to give you a little bit of back history about myself, my wife and I both grew up on Anchor Bay Drive, we lived there our whole lives, we lived 12 houses from one another. She hated me most of my life, and then she finally, I guess I kind of persuaded her. We got married, we moved up to Elginak, up on the point. It was always our dream to go back to Anchor Bay Drive, which we were able to achieve that. Labor Day will be three years. We have three kids, three young kids, from 12 to seven, the oldest just turned 12. I went from a 2,500 square foot home with a two and a half car garage to a 1,500 square foot home with just barely a two car garage as it is, and I just need the space, you know, is what it comes down to. So, that's what I'm, I guess that's the reason I'm up here, to seek the variance for that.
You're tearing that existing one down, right?
Correct, and I'm also, if I could bring these examples up to you guys? So, the first one, 7948 Anchor Bay Drive, this is Mark Tharrett. And this one's 8,000 Anchor Bay Drive, that is Tom Tilly, which Mr. Tilly is in the audience tonight with me. I am building the exact garage that those, that they are. Mr. Tilly's about two doors down from me, and Mr. Tharrett's about five houses away from me, so.
And, again, tearing that existing garage down, refabbing the existing garage?
No, it's gonna be a complete tear down, brand new build.
Yeah, didn't we approve this?
Yeah, all right, hold, hold right there. Do we have any letters from, from this one?
Oh, from, I didn't see.
Me and my packet got, Sue, they got destroyed. Just double checking so I don't miss another letter. All right, I'm gonna open up public comment in regards to this. Case?
The building that he's.
Hang on, can you, can you just stand up, state your name?
Plans, Tom Tilly.
Thank you.
I live two houses away from Jason. The plans that he is using were the plans that I had gotten off the internet that had been approved by Sid Brown. So, I put mine up first, then Mark Tharrett came down, and he liked the building that I had, and he asked me if he could use the same plans. So, I ran him a copy of the plans. I had a brother neighbor, Mark Warmer, he also got the plans, and he was gonna put the same, same building up. So, the building is a really nice building, it's 28 feet deep by 34 feet wide, two-story, plenty of storage, it's a beautiful building. And if you guys ever come down the street, you can take a look at it. But I had to, Sid, when Sid saw it, he said, you don't need a variance or nothing, just go ahead and put it up. He said, this looks great. And he said, I'm impressed that you got these plans off the internet, he said, because they're extremely comprehensive. So, anyway, Jason's got the plans now, so he's running with it.
Understand, I appreciate it. So, with that decision was said, you know, Sid was a great, great building official. Gary interprets his mean heights a little different than Sid, him and I have had multiple conversations about that. I did have my, you know, building with Sid, so Gary is educating me on different methods of it. So, again, everyone's got a different way of looking at the mean roof, roof height, you know? Gary and Sid are obviously two different people.
Correct, yeah.
Gary is our guy now, so not a, not a problem.
Yep.
So, just the mean height, right, Gary? It's all we're after right now?
Two-story.
So, he's got the two-story height over eight feet, is that?
Over seven.
Or over seven, I'm sorry. So, the attic is, the attic storage is over seven foot. No letting proposed in there?
No.
How much is over seven foot?
I have to look at the print, but.
It's an eight foot.
It's eight foot, it's an eight foot ceiling, yeah, yep. Above, you mean above that eight foot ceiling? I'd have to look at the print to tell you that off the top of my head, but standard, you know, roof truss, you know, so.
Well, the building there is 34, you can see it's got two foot over, or two foot, so the room is probably realistically 20, it goes from back to back, right? The wall sits in there, so it'd be 28 by 28 or 30.
When I was parked in this driveway this afternoon, I looked to the, you know, down the street, there's a two-story big blue, and I'm not talking the one that we approved years ago with the, there's a big, there's a big two-story that, I don't remember seeing that come in front of us.
That's, is that, is it, does it have a cement driveway, is it?
Just, it looks kind of new.
Yeah, so that's next to Mark Tharrett, that's, I can't think of John's last.
I didn't see that one come in front of us.
John Adams, that's John, and he built his, I mean, they started, I mean, Mark started first, and then John started right after him. And, you know, obviously, our garage style's different than his, but he still has eight foot ceilings as well, and on that garage as well.
Well, I don't know, as far as like, we've been on Anchor Bay Drive, you know, with, usually it's been a setback or anything, but any of these ones like that is always.
It's always the height over there, too.
Right, right, well, as I was saying, it's always been the height, but it's always, like I said, it's not.
It's right up there with Colony Drive, you know, they're maximizing a small, unique lot, I mean, they, fortunately, they get that, you know, that access to, across the street to.
What a nice. How wide is the property?
50 foot.
Are those 40s or 50s?
50, I'm a 50 foot lot there.
So, where does it sit relative to inside the lot?
So, on my neighbor to, on the one side, four foot, and the other side's 12 foot. And the reason I did that is I want wider on the one side, so I can, you know, normally I park my truck over there, or if I pull my boat out of the water, somewhere to put a trailer, you know, just to have that storage. As you guys know, living on the water, you're, I mean, storage is very limited, so I try to, try to get everything that I can, you know? Without, without obviously approaching on my neighbor's stuff, too, you know? We're all in the same boat.
And on the print, I mean, he's not asking for living quarters up there, bathroom, kitchen, nothing that we have to worry about on that eight foot, it's all cold storage?
Yeah, you know, I haven't done the review on the building yet, but I think we're just talking about second floor storage.
Yep, it's all storage, second floor.
Open storage.
Yep.
It's right up there with Colony Drive. You know, they're, they're maximizing a small, unique lot. I mean, they, fortunately, they get that, you know, that access to, across the street to it.
What a nice car.
How wide, how wide is the property?
Fifty foot.
Are those forties or fifties?
Fifty, I'm a fifty-foot lot there.
So, where does it sit relative to inside the lot?
So, on my neighbor to, my, on the one side, four foot, and the other side's twelve foot. And the reason I did that is I want wider on the one side, so I can, you know, normally I park my truck over there, or if I pull my boat out of the water, somewhere to put a trailer, you know, just to have that storage. As you guys know, living on the water, you're, I mean, storage is very limited, so I try to, try to get everything that I can, you know? Without, without obviously approaching on my neighbor's stuff too, you know? We're all in the same boat.
And, and on the prints, I mean, he's not asking for, uh, uh, living quarters up there, bathroom, kitchen, nothing that we have to be worried about. On that eight-foot, it's all cold storage?
Yeah, you know, I haven't done the, uh, review on the building yet, uh, but I think we're just talking about second floor storage.
Yep, it's all storage, second floor.
Open storage.
Yep.
And we trust you.
We know where you live.
Yeah.
So, you guys, you know my position on Anchor Bay Drive. I love the street, I love the sunsets there. My wife wants to move there. I can't stand how close everyone is together. That's why we're not living there. Um, and I'd have the biggest garage across the street I could, which that blue one is real nice. That, that one, how that one get through us, but it, um, that was a beautiful structure.
Definitely improves that.
Um, but, again, they're, like I said, they're cottage houses that are getting vamped and they're coming up, you know? The, the garage that he has is in a bad garage. That's why I'm like, "It's coming down, right, it's coming down," you know, that's why I said twice. But vinyl siding makes it look, you know, I'm sure a lot nicer than what it probably is on the inside.
So, actually, that property was, actually, that property has been in my mom's side of the family since the early nineteen hundreds.
It's nice and it's all well-plated, it's nice.
And actually, what's crazy is my great uncle owned it, um, which that was my mom's cousin, which was my godmother. So, I grew up in this house as a kid. But like, that house, yeah, uh, you know, back then, I'm, I'm Polish, so Polacks back, you know, my grandfather too. Back then, they did things. Uh, you know, I, I look at myself nowadays and I'm like, "Man, I'm, I'm a real wimp," for better words, compared to like my grandfather and my great uncle. I mean, they did stuff, if you didn't do it on your own, it didn't get done. It was just that simple. And that, and that garage was probably built, if I had to take a guess, was probably built in the sixties, late fifties, early sixties, if I had to take a guess. Um, so, um, but yeah.
And I think that's what the ordinance wants us to, to maintain and that's, you know what I mean? Um, but again, I don't, I, I believe, you know, he, he's not like he's keeping up with the Joneses, but in the same token, I think he has the right to keep up with the Joneses right there. Like the, the, the plan is a nice plan. It is a nice plan. It's a, it's sometimes unfortunate in certain circumstances that, that attic eight-foot comes into play in a lot of different, different other properties. And I think, you know, that being a cold storage and there's no, you know, I mean, I don't think they can ever do sewers or, we're not afraid of them turning into more than questionable living spaces in any way, shape, or form, you know? I think that eight-foot isn't gonna be... In the height, I, I mean, Gary and I could go round and round on, on how he measures and how I measure, and he's right, I'm wrong. But in the same token, we're within one-point-five feet of each other, and that's what he's asking for his variance.
Right.
So... Right, Gary? Perfect. Can't make a motion, guys.
Well, you can suggest one and then someone can say...
You know where my suggestions go.
I know.
But I still make you guys talk. And the girls aren't here. And we've been here an hour and fifteen minutes already.
Well, I thought we were doing well till we had that.
Oh, that brewer, he did, he did a little bit on that.
He did a good job. He sold me on that.
Hopefully, hopefully, the planning commission takes it easy a little bit on him, lets him, lets him roll for a little bit.
Well, I would say that we would make the mo, I said I would make the motion to approve the variance of the one-and-a-half foot height, uh, and a second story per section three-point-one-oh, oh-one-point-six for the height of the eight-foot ceilings in the upstairs, cold storage.
Okay, and then we'll go practical difficulty based on?
Um, well, you pointed out, you know, these are, this is a unique situation, pre, if the whole Anchor Bay Drive road, I mean, they're, um, exceptional, narrow shell and this, that was, you know, I mean, the setbacks are everywhere. I mean, it's hard to achieve that, you know, for one foot or two foot, get one foot rule here. Um, so I can understand that, so that would be a good practi, uh, practical difficulty. Unique situation again. Um, again, the, the, the land down there, and you've been there your whole life, and your wife wants it.
Oh, yes, that's always that we've...
It would not be, usually, an issue in other parcels, you know, but again, you're restricted on how wide and how deep and whatnot. So, if the unique situation, not self-evident again, you didn't plot these properties, um, substantial dust justice, um, gonna help a good tax base, no. But, um, it's going along with the theme of everybody else that's down and up and down your road.
Yeah.
I mean, I couldn't, it is a nice design. I can, you can always speak up to add something if you know.
Your motion.
Um, and again, you know, as far as that country, there, this week, uh, just given because the, uh, of the Anchor Bay Drive and Colony Drive and whatnot, uh, these, uh, situations have been, um, I don't wanna say rubber stamp, but are, are more common in, in that particular areas.
And at this time, the, the planning is not willing to make special rules or ordinance changes due to Colony or Anchor Bay Drive, so that's why they have to still come in from the ZBA.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's not, we're not gonna try to, to say, "Hey, this road's allowed to, but this road's not allowed to." Trust me, Gary and I have had conversations on that as well. So... And then, got a second not to interrupt, sorry?
I'll second the motion.
Sue, you got that pretty well? I'm ready.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. I was curious. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for being patient.
Hope you enjoyed the, uh, presentation.
So, with that said, Gary, I mean, we're still in that position right now, as Sue writes that, that, you know, we can't make any special changes for Colony or, or, you know, I know you said you don't want to, you know, pursue that and, you know, okay. It's just that when these cases keep coming up and keep coming up, keep coming up, you know, I just don't want...
I understand.
Well, yeah, you gotta look at it as, as a township, as you did some of that, and then we denied it on someone that has, uh, on another situation.
Correct.
Then we'd be open for...
Well, we don't wanna, you know, I get it that we don't wanna put one road above or below the next road in any way, shape, or form. It just stinks that everyone's got, you know what I mean?
Soon it'll either be open.
Yeah, it'll all be torn down and the whole view built. I don't think so. And now all the Burke streets are gonna start coming into remodels now. They...
You know, they could, because, you know, those, those houses there are built setbacks, so I don't think we've got to be open.
Yeah.
They might put in some porch or...
True, true.
But, yeah, they built those houses, they squeezed them.
Yep. I was in one, I was in one and, and nice, nice, like, you know, canal and everything. Uh, just needed a little bit more work than I wanted to do to it, but, and just saying, they're starting to show some age, you know what I mean, and they're starting to improve. Where Anchor Bay Drive is the same thing. They're either tearing them down or fixing them up again for the third time, or thank goodness that you see that in your family, I guess.
Well, we can move along with the others.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we're... Yeah, I was just... She's doing double duty.
Sorry, forgot.
Have a good night, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Gary, you can't leave yet. So, I'll move on now. Um, I don't see any unfinished business. Correct. I didn't see anything in our packet. So, here's where I'm gonna go on a, uh, kind of a why we are so important to be here at our meetings and why certain people are supposed to be here, or, you know, I understand that not everybody can be here at every meeting, I get that. But, again, we have no report from the planning commission, right?
Right.
So...
Months.
Not that it's irritating me in any way, shape, or form, but we still have to keep that communication between the two boards. You know, they like to see what we're doing and, and I'd like to know what's coming up. So, I know Gary is sometimes a liaison when certain people aren't here. Do we have anything coming from the planning that we need to be aware of? To where, nothing, you know, update?
From the planning commission?
Yeah, it's just a little report, I mean...
Anything coming your way at this point?
No, not coming our way, but...
Just, I, I mean, what are you guys working on? What are they working on? I mean...
When we're doing this, like we did tonight, um, you know, planning commission on the brewery situation still needs to address that. But the feedback that I'm getting, and sometimes it's mixed, is that they want to take care of the zoning, uh, first. Uh, let's make sure that zoning will allow it to be there, similar to what happened tonight. Uh, and then they can take it from there, instead of, they go to planning commission and they go, "Oh, you don't meet the zoning ordinance, so we got a table, you have to go back to..." You know, and all this takes time, takes months to get that to go that way. So, I feel that the way that we're doing it now, where if there's a zoning issue, that we bring it to you first and see where we're at with it. Uh, and if you approve the zoning, then it can go to the planning with, with the understanding that there's no conflict with, uh, with the zoning laws. So, I think that, I think it works out best, um, to do it that way.
I, I like when you say that in your, when I ask you to, to say, you know, if you wanted to add something. I like when you say, "Hey, this isn't," like you did today, "this isn't final. You got, you guys are only doing this portion, and he still has a little bit more road ahead of him to be able to do that." So, we're not the only yes or no in, in any circumstance, but it's kinda nice to know that, "Hey, he's coming for us just for this."
Well, it was helpful, there you go.
It, it was, it was, you know, um, it just, again, we need people to be present at the board, Debbie. And, just saying, there's cer, you know what I mean, we, we are absent, but, uh, again, it's, it shouldn't just be three of us up here. So, if someone wants to volunteer, talk to Artie. I say, just send him a friendly email, say that you would be interested in, maybe he'd look at your application for it. We do have alternates and, but we're always asking for another, I guess. Um, except for your planning, I guess, right? Cause they asked you on the zoning board. I was there at the one meeting when they asked you, you know? Um, any, I, I don't have anything to review.
If they, you went on that trip today?
Yep.
How, how was that? So, there's a, Artie put a trip together to go down to Indiana to look at this new sewage plant. And it's a all-carbon type-free type?
I mean, the, uh, it's a very simple, clean process and it'd be, uh, great application for San Sushi.
Okay, so, maybe an alternative?
An alternative to a wastewater plant. You don't have the plant for, the money for, but it's a, um, a small, um, wastewater plant on like a thirty-by-eighty size.
Big greenhouse.
Greenhouse. That takes...
Plants.
Yeah, well, the big thing is too, is it can be, it's self-efficient, meaning that it will, you can sell the, the benefits of it, pretty much to pay for itself. So, it's almost self-funded.
I mean, you still have to collect the wastewater yourself, to clean the sludge and stuff, but once it gets to that point, you can send it to this facility, which is was six, seven years old and was brand-new to us and it didn't even have any smell. I mean, it's a small footprint and it was an opportunity for downtown excellent. I don't wanna think it was, I'm not sure what the first one, but, uh, you know, they still have to run through that, but this first initial review, I mean, there was only like five or six people from the island that went, but, uh, you know, it took all day to go there and back, but, uh, it was a great learning and...
And I saw you on the ferry this morning when I was...
I mean, when you see something firsthand, it's really, really, uh...
Is it like state-of-the-art new technologies?
No, it's, no, that's, I mean, it was very simple.
Yeah, it was, it's just...
I mean, I think, I think, uh, talking to the, uh, the person that's in charge, I think, they would, the technology of your phone and things like that, I mean, they can really incorporate some technology into it, out of, uh, most of it's more chemistry and how the algae mixes with the, uh, uh, bacteria and clean sap portion of, but then equipment is just a wheel with some air blowing around and the sewage comes in and it just creates algae to eat away the sewage and then you got algae and clean water going out, you know, we still have the alternative to pilot the final grid, uh, thing, but they were pumping the water back into, uh, streams, you know, two streams and...
And it generates something carbon or something, right?
I mean, he's just trying to justify that, but he could, yeah, he could, uh, carve the carbon, uh...
Might be nice if the, the bar could re, you know...
Well, it's gonna open, it's still...
Oh, I get that, but you know what I'm saying, it'd be a little bit safer and maybe, you know, more, you know?
I mean, the septic's on Parsons Island are, you know, they're, when the water comes up, you know, they don't work. We know it's probably leaking in everybody's seawall. It's just, in the downtown area, it can't be, uh, expanded or even developed. It's been going down for the last ten years. Businesses have been leaving. The bars closed for the last three years, uh, because they have to pump that, you know, uh, truck every day. This would be, and I think Artie went for a, a bigger septic field than Eagle shot it down. This is something that could be easily find a land, place it in, start, uh, maybe even, I mean, get some people to hook it up. I mean, you wouldn't even have to, free hookups now. If you don't hook up now, then it'll cost you, but maybe, you know, work out that kinda deal, but at least it's something that could really revitalize, uh, the downtown area. And he said he went to New York and he's seen that, uh, small town go from dead to, where he coming in, uh, something else coming in. It was really, uh, something that it could change a downtown area like that.
That's good.
And it was, uh, again, it was, uh, I mean, you, you have the septic pits or whatever, the collection areas and they're just, and then it's pumped into this greenhouse, thirty-by-eighty. It's got the sun, just grow the algae in the summer and algae in the winter. Not too much sun, you get enough sun in the winter. And then these wheels are just turning and creating, they're growing algae and then they're knocking the algae off. And then collecting the algae to be sold for paint later and the water being purified. And then there's a couple of extra processes. Depending how, you know, how the, uh, the engineer interpreted it, it could be, uh, more filtering or add a little bit of this or more, uh, the, uh, the like, get the bacteria finally...
Good.
Parsons Island?
I mean, the island will probably, a lot of people...
Fifty-first state.
I mean, we were eating sandwiches outside the, uh, building, so, and we, I mean, can you eat a sandwich outside a wastewater plant? And this was in a parking lot of a school, next to, uh, the school's like a hundred feet right there. And this is in a, I mean, you drive up the parking lot, and here it is to the left, and here's a school. It's a private school that, uh, they said the school has, uh, produced like five NBA basketball stars already. It's just a small, private school that they specialize, I think, in basketball, but it's, it was a very, I mean, twenty-five, thirty thousand a year or something like that. I'm not really sure on the whole school, but this school had a small little wastewater plant and then they, uh, put this in like seven years ago. This company's been, um...
We need to start...
They're in Egypt, they're...
At least that kinda food too then, I guess, right?
I mean, you couldn't, I couldn't smell anything. I mean, once you're inside there.
Thank God.
I mean, you're, if you, I mean, you're almost tempted to touch that wheel, that is, but that's sewage, that's right there and there's no smell there. I mean, there's maybe some smell out of the pit there where it's coming in, but nothing.
Alright.
Yeah, I wish I could've gone. I, I saw you on the ferry this morning. We were getting a little, walking on the bus. It's like, no, gotta go to work.
That's good. Alright, public comments? Close public comments?
Make a motion adjourned?
Second to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Sue.